This is a Banbury County School District Board of Trustees meeting. Today's date is Monday, March 4th, 2024, and it's 6:00 PM. And I would like to call the meeting to order. Board members, I'd like to move forward with the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. So if you please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the people for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We may bow our heads in just a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you. We're down to item number three on the agenda, which is approval of the agenda. And board members, you've had an opportunity to receive and review the agenda prior to tonight's meeting. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of the agenda?
Madam Chairman.
Yes?
I believe that the agenda presented for March 4th, 2024, you have accepted as presented.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Here or none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Item number four, which is approval of the minutes for February 5th, 2024. You've also had an opportunity to receive and review those meeting minutes. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of the February 5th, 2024 meeting minutes?
That's here. This time I'll make a motion that will approve the minutes for February 4th, 2024.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Here or none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. We are down to item number five on the agenda, which is the school reports. And I will turn that over to Dr. Brown.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So you have in your packets a copy of all the school reports from your respective principals. So in efforts to save some time tonight, because we have some lengthy discussions coming later in the meeting, I'm sure all of you've had a chance to review the individual school reports. So if you have any questions, you can try to entertain them at this time, or you can start with each other, email the principal, or I can have them call.
Board members, were there any questions from any of you?
I have a question about the chart for first graders and the second graders. Okay, on the first one, for example, which is Langford, it's got 10 students. And then it's got 80 students, I guess, are passing. So does that mean there are 90 students?
Correct, it's 10, 90 students.
Okay, great.
And I would like to clarify, this does not mean not all the students are failing in all three subjects. They could be failing in one, or two, or three. So she just wanted to provide you some information about what grades look like at the end of the first semester.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sure. Do you think all of those students, I would think all of those students have been invited to come to intercession.
Of course, yes, in a child endangerment.
And is there any knowledge how many of them actually did attend?
I think I presented that at the previous board meeting when the principals did. But if not, I can tell that to principals through proof, too. Good thing is they're coming back in April, so we will have finished intercession week number two. So they'll have even more information for them at the April board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
With the Denmark Olar Elementary School, and looking at the item number three, which is the achievement report, the school-wide green box growth report. I mean, I have to believe that the percentages are what they are. But that's a little concerning to me. Well, actually, a lot concerning. Do we know what's going on?
Yeah, now, dream box is just a predictor of what the students would look like if they were to take the state test now. And if you notice, look at August through today, so it is declining. So the percentage, you know, where they're achieving below grade level is declining. But that's your reading in your math scores, predictions. So, you know, we do have, this was in line with our state scores. So this is in line with the students' achievement in Denmark Olar.
Okay. That just happened, it caught my attention. I don't have any other questions. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. All right, we'll move down to item number six, which is the athletic report.
And again, our athletic director, Mr. Williams, has furnished you with an athletic report. We are now into our spring sports, so that for us, that's soccer, baseball, softball, and track. We would like to congratulate our Denmark Olar varsity girls basketball team, who won the upper state championship a week ago, and then played for the state championship this past Saturday in Florence. And they fell just short by just a few points, a couple of points, to Lakeview. But I would like to congratulate the Denmark Olar varsity girls basketball team once again for stellar season. The records that they've set is unprecedented. And to the coaches of that team for working very hard, and to all of our programs for all of their hard work.
The sixth grade at the varsity year, so which school attended a University of South Carolina basketball game. They saw a really good one. That gave mother teaches at Bellmister School. So they were invited, they went to the game, I think it was last Saturday.
And we have more students going. So, yes, so that is becoming a treat for students. We can't take all 1,170 students and roll our history. But we're trying to take as many kids to expose them to that experience as possible.
But they didn't ask to be a chaperone.
We'll put you there on the list.
If you're chaperoning, please sit just a little bit.
All right. We are down to item number seven, which is superintendent's report on student staff recognition.
In short, sweet tonight, I would like to recognize tonight Dr. Brandon Hughes, who is the guidance counselor at Denmark Olar Middle School. She's been selected to be part of the Spring 2024 Star Teacher Cohort. That is sponsored by Palmetto State Teaching Association and the Foundation for Professional Development. She was one of 10 teachers throughout South Carolina who was selected to participate in this program tonight. So I just wanted to say congratulations to her for being an outstanding veteran teacher. Also, in your enrollment, in your packet tonight, I provided you with the district current enrollment, as we always do. And as this was called on February 26th, 2024, which was last week. And at that time, we studied 1,767 students across the district in pre-K through 12th grade.
Anything else under that to do with item number?
Not that I mentioned yet.
We will move on to item number eight, which is requests for out-of-state overnight trips. And Dr. Brown?
All right, you have in your packet, I believe there are three of them. So the first one comes from the Banbury Gerhardt varsity baseball team, wanting to play in the invitational tournament, baseball during the spring break, as they do every year. They would leave on April 1st, they would return on April 3rd. And all funds have been raised by students and parents. Second trip is the BE Honors Jazz Ensemble, wanting to visit Charlotte, North Carolina. Again, that's just one day, April to 12th. However, because it is North Carolina, Carol winds, and part of Carol winds is out of state, has to come to the board. But again, the funds have been raised by the parent and the band. And the third one is the physics, physical science students, wanting to attend the Engineering Day at Carol winds on April the 26th. Funds again have been raised by students. And Ms. Natasha Smart, the science teacher at BE High School, will be chaperoning the students with other chaperones that sign up, students campus. So those are the three that I'll bring to the board tonight.
Okay. Well, board members, you've had an opportunity to hear Dr. Brown as well as review these prior to tonight's meeting. So what's the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of these requests?
Madam Chairman. I believe that we approved the request for the BE varsity baseball team to attend the invitational tournament in Charleston. The BE Honors Jazz Ensemble to attend the performance in the park in Charlotte. And for the physics and physical science students to attend the Engineering Day that will be at Carol winds.
Okay, motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Here or none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, motion carries. We are down to item number nine, which is district ELA and handwriting textbook selection.
Yes, and as you saw in your board packets, South Carolina has adopted new ELA standards. And so all schools were, and South Carolina were charged with adopting new state-approved textbooks. They were given a list of choices. That's not something that districts can just willy-nilly choose. You have to select from the state-approved list. So we had curriculum teams, we had school administrators as part of these teams, review the state-approved list, and these are the textbooks that they had selected. They were right behind Ms. Walker on the back wall there. We made them available for any of y'all that wanted to come preview those. I would like to say, and the handwriting K and three, we've had those for a couple of years now, but they are now part of that Halt-Mifflin-Harcourt Publishing Company that elementary schools have chosen because they want to. But these are the three selections that have been made by the curriculum teams and the principals. And it is Halt-Mifflin-Harcourt Publishing, HMA is for the elementary schools, McGraw-Hill's, LL, McGraw-Hill Study Sync for the middle and high schools. And we'll need the board to vote on it, because now all boards have to approve curriculums adopted by the districts.
Okay. All right. What's the pleasure of the board with regards to this?
Madam Chairman. I believe that the board adopted the English Language Arts selections that the different teams selected, and also the handwriting selections that were selected. And do you want me to read their names?
No, I think we have that information here. I don't think it's necessary that we read it, but. Yeah, I think we're fine with it. I think Dr. Brown listed what they were, so. All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Here, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That is correct. And if you have a chance to preview the elementary and the handwriting notes that is incorporated, then that, yes, it is.
All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any more discussion? Here or none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. We are down to item number 10, which is approval of the 2024-2025 school calendar.
Yes, ma'am.
We were, I'm sorry, we were reminded to bring our packets from last month, so I think we're ready.
I was just going to say that. We asked that you please bring back, you were given a folder last month with all the information, so you could take it and absorb it. I'm back tonight to ask the board to please vote on one of these calendars. As you know, for the sake of those listening, we presented two calendars. One was to continue with having week-long intercession weeks. But after, I encourage the board members to please read all of the comments that we received from the survey that we sent out. And as I stated in last month's board meeting, some of the most common comments was childcare was an issue. Having week-long breaks that compounded that issue. Teachers and students still wanted the frequent breaks, but they wanted them broken out more throughout the year. So we drafted an intercession week, but we also, calendar, but we also drafted kind of what I call a hybrid, which is that traditional early start calendar. You have two, and up in the top right-hand corner, one says draft nine and one. That means attending nine weeks to be out that one whole week. And the other one is, we drafted a calendar that ticked all the checkboxes based on the feedback from the survey that we received in looking at the concerns from the parents, from the students, and the faculty and staff. And so we came up with this calendar to kind of meet all those checkboxes. But anyway, that is the traditional early start. We would start early enough to finish this first semester prior to winter break. But we would not be starting in July, which was, if you read those comments, almost 80% of respondents said July was too early. So with that, I am asking the board tonight to choose one of these calendars, so that we can get a calendar and present it to the State Department.
So.
I just had a question. Was the cost, do you think that the cost of the intercession was, it would benefit justify the cost?
My personal opinion is no, it didn't. Not today. But remember, I told the board, we will not have achievement data till the end of this year, this summer, when we reach the end of the year and that students have participated in all of our state testing, to include the second semester EOCs and second line of rating pass. So we won't have all of that data until the summer to fully look at that. But when you look at the rest of the information that I included in your packet, as far as student absences, teacher absences, substitute and paraprofessional absences and attendance, and the fall EOC scores, which I can't talk about a lot because they're still in bar code. Some of those boxes, we had hoped to attack with that, with the first intercession week. For instance, student discipline, it made a small dent in that. But in teacher and student attendance, we didn't see any change.
And I already seen one of the reports that the teachers, you know, absenteeism was increased.
Right, so if you look at that chart, this in your packet particularly, and I will bring you one that is most concerning to me, and that's teacher attendance. When you compare fall of 2022 to fall of 2023, an intercession week did not affect teacher attendance whatsoever. Didn't improve it, I should say.
Yeah, it affected it.
So far, didn't.
Excuse me. May I?
Sure.
I was wondering if, when the attendance was calculated, we remember that parent, people who, teachers who had signed up for a rental property or something, you know, or had made a deposit for vacation or something, were excused. And I'm wondering to what extent those numbers and personal day numbers affected, because this was a huge increase in absences.
It didn't affect Ms. Hurst, because those individuals, because I know the ones that you're talking about, they're the same ones that took those same vacations in 2022. We didn't count those days against them. So that was not factored in the absences, that these numbers that you see in front of you.
Okay, and then when you do this, are you, are personal days, I think teachers are allowed to take some personal days. Are those also?
Any absences for any reason was calculated for these numbers. Except for those July vacations that were pre-booked in 2022 that the board voted on to exempt those teachers from those days.
This personally seemed a shock.
It is very shocking. I think that was one of the most eye-opening in our principals' meeting, that this piece of data was one of the most eye-opening pieces of data that we presented back to the principals, that I charged the principals to go back and share it with their faculty.
Yet in the survey, many, many teachers said they did feel refreshed, they did appreciate the intercession and stuff.
Right, which is why we did the nine-one and the other, the traditional early start. But we put in a fall break, a winter break, and a spring break. So teachers still get those breaks, they're just not weeks long at times. And then we folded in those intercession, two days of intercession for students right before they have to take state testing next week.
Okay, so two things. One, for the public, can you clarify for the public what the start date of school for our children will be? We see it on the calendar, but everyone may not have remembered.
So the draft, not intercession week calendar, which is that nine weeks you attend, nine weeks, and then you're out for the week. The start date for students would be July the 31st. All staff would have to return back to work on July 23rd. Students, July 31st. The last day for students would be June 3rd, 2025, all right? On the traditional early start hybrid calendar, start date for staff would be July 29th. Start date for students would not be until August the 5th. So that gets us into August, if you read those comments, which is what the majority of the principals wanted to say. Students don't return until August. And then the end date, the last day for students, would be May 30th, 2025.
Another thing, if you could just clarify for the viewers and listeners, I think there's a misconception out in the community, just in general, that these calendars are created like in a month or two. And we know that that's not the case. So if you can just give them, the viewers and those that are listening or may have questions, not necessarily all of the background, because I know there's a lot that goes into it. But how far back do you go when you're starting to look at the calendar for the next year? I, we know that it's not something that you just come up with in a month, but if you could clarify.
The end of the first nine weeks, we really start looking at planning, I would say mid to the end of the first nine weeks of school. So by the time we are in September, we are already planning for the next school year, because there's certain information that we have to get to the State Department about professional development and about summer school and things like that. So we start meeting with our principals definitely by the end of the first nine weeks. So that's, like I said, September. And then we'll have a couple of those meetings, so that by January, February, I'm bringing a draft calendar to the board, one that we can all live with. Does that make sense? So we'll have multiple monthly or every other month meetings with our district administrative teams and finance department, because this affects our district office, too, and what they have to do, closing that one fiscal year and starting another fiscal year. And that's another proponent that people often forget, is that you have to take into consideration your fiscal operations of your school when you're planning these. So by the time we meet with all district and school-level administrative teams, we have worked on these calendars for at least three months before we even bring y'all a draft. And since I've been interim or shared or consolidated superintendent, we have spent a couple of months as a board and superintendent communicating about the calendars for you guys past them. So there you go. I mean, we spend several months on these, just getting them in draft format. And then I'll bring them to you guys, and y'all spend one to two months considering the drafts that we bring.
Okay, so essentially, the, this looks like it starts right after, right after the start of a school year.
It actually starts the year before.
Yeah, that it starts the year before, exactly. So I just wanted to.
We get out of school in June, we start thinking about, we're getting ready to start the common school year, but we are already starting for the year to follow. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I just wanted, like I said, there's just a misconception out there that people have a tendency to believe that this is something that, you know, is just thought up overnight. And it's not. It's something that does require a lot of planning and meetings in order to get it to this version of it, in order for it to come to the board for consideration. So I appreciate you explaining that. Does anyone have any other questions about the calendar or any other comments?
May I ask you that's one question?
Sure.
Okay. I was interested in finding out, it seems like there are three days of personal or professional development in a row. And do you find that that is the best way for the district to hire people to come in and speak to the faculty? Or is that something the faculty prefers? Or is that a better plan than like one this month, one next month?
You mean at the beginning of the year and the ending of the year, is that what you're looking at?
Well, especially at the beginning, yes.
Yes, we always start the year off, there's actually five days. We call it professional development or teacher prep. There are some faculty that has to be in mandatory professional development. And faculty who don't, you still need to come in and work and get your classrooms ready, so to allow them time to get their classrooms prepared for that. So it just depends on what department you're in, what school you're in, what grade level you teach, as to how much professional development that you have to have. But we have found historically in this district, for as long as I can remember, that you need all five of those days at the beginning of the year to get this done before school starts. And there's some professional development that's required before day one of school.
As a retired teacher, I always remember how much I appreciated the time before school started, to get your classroom ready, get everything lined up in time for the students. That's necessary.
Any other thoughts from the other side of the board?
I guess I just wanted to say that I did notice that it seemed that, like, the intercession week seemed to, as far as like the behavior, seemed to affect the younger children more than it did for the older children. Like they needed the breaks a little bit more than the older children did. But I don't think that there's, you know, there's, I guess, not necessarily a way for us to, I guess, attribute or make it where we would be able to account for that, like to do something different for the individuals than we would be for all of us to make that work out a little bit better.
Yeah, it did not work. A lot of times, you know, based on my past history, after the students have a break, sometimes it takes a day or two to get them back in the mode of learning. So, you know, I think it works both ways.
We did see that, several comments.
I saw that.
For several parents and faculty that the week-long was just too much, kind of like getting your students re-acclimated after Christmas break. So you were exactly right. It takes, when your students are out for extended breaks like that, it does take a little bit to get, especially your younger students, to get them back acclimated and get back into that routine at school.
I think you have plenty of breaks, you know, sprinkled in.
Yes, we did.
I mean, October, November, December, January, February, April, so.
We tried to make it to where we had something each month without doing that week-long. Trying to make it less cumbersome for those that have to look for and obtain childcare and spend money for that.
And may I ask, does the plan also still be to have after-school, right?
Yes.
Can that be a little remedial?
And Ms. Hurst, I do want to say something about after-school. Remember, we talked at length about Easter funding has ended, it is gone. So Denmark has submitted a 21st Century Learning Grant to try to help fund that. We are continuing to see grants and other funding sources for that. So I'll say, Ms. Hurst, that we will have after-school as long as we have the funding to support after-school. We certainly want to make that a priority, you know, reach to succeed is one thing in the summer. And, but we will have after-school as long as we can find the funding to source such. But make no mistake, from the principals to our GCDF coordinators, to our guidance counselors, to our CFO, and everybody in between, our federal programs director, Title I coordinator, we're all looking to find funding sources to help continue to support those programs. So we will offer that to the degree possible based on the funding available.
So, board members, what are your thoughts? I do like the traditional early start. I like that calendar over the one with the lengthy, go ahead.
I want to add one more thing. So I don't know, like I said, if you read the comments? We had several other comments, too, about having family members in neighboring districts. And wishing our, or for whatever reason, wished our calendars kind of followed neighboring districts. I would like to say that the traditional early start calendar falls more in line with the two current Varmo County school districts and what will be the newly reconsolidated Varmo School District calendar. and what will be the newly reconsolidated Warren School District calendar that they've already posted theirs, as well as Orangeburg County School District. So just wanted the board to know that in our planning team and with our administrative staff, we have also been in communications with their schools, would always do that, what are y'all going to do? And also, we still share some facilities and, and stuff with those districts, um, or with Orangeburg. So we try to, we try to partner. We try to develop a calendar that kind of, kind of followed theirs as well.
I'm very impressed, you are showing, in my personal opinion, I'm hearing a lot of instances of sensitivity expressed to the community, which I think is important, and to the teachers as well as the students. And I really commend you for undertaking, yeah, this has been a harrowing experience, especially for just typing three hundred, six hundred comments, I mean, it's overwhelming, but thank you for doing that. And, and I hope it's promoted that in fact, this has been done.
Yes, and I want the parents to know that's listening tonight, the community know that you do have a voice, and we do the survey, said that we can hear your voice. And I think the students' voices are just as important as anyone else's. I tend to, to, to look at those comments very hardly, very, very hardly. Very much so. Their voice matters. And I want the parents and community know, we, we thank you for participating. We heard you. We have tried to draft calendars to, it, it's impossible to tick every single box. But we feel pretty confident what we brought to you tonight in both of these calendars, but particularly the traditional early start one that did address most of the comments on the survey feedback about this calendar.
Well, I think it's important for the community to know that, you know, sometimes when you try something different, and if it doesn't work to the advantage of educating the kids, which is, that's the ultimate goal, then you do have to try something different again. You have to figure out what works best. We tried something different and, um, the results, in my opinion, don't support doing that again. So, we have to try something different. So if the board does not have any more comments, or if you have any thoughts on what your, what your preference is, we can go around one at a time, or someone can just entertain if you want. I'll entertain a motion, but before that, yes, you had.
I did, I did try to analyze the comments, and there were about four comments that I thought were so heartening. Could I take them and just share them?
Sure.
Okay. One student said, "We still go the same amount of days and get the same amount of days off." He gets a pause. "I do not care what the school calendar is, as long as we go to school, I'm fine." But this is young man, young woman. I don't mind the new calendar because it seems helpful to a lot of students. And those comments, there were several comments about how students could improve their grades, which I thought really should.
Very helpful. That's why I wanted y'all to see the comments.
And listen to this one. "I feel safe." And then, here's one, it obviously doesn't help, because, well, this is not so positive, but if the student's grade is so low that they can't even pull it up, I just feel like there would be no point, so I have no opinion. But I thought those were really worth pointing out.
My favorite one was, "It's the calendar, it's a love-hate relationship."
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the traditional early start calendar.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. The traditional early start. Motion on the floor in a second, any further discussion? Care or none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have, the motion carries. We will adopt the traditional early start calendar for the school year 2024 through 2025. And thank you, Dr. Brown, as well as all of your staff and anyone else that had any hands in putting this together. It's a lot of information to, to survey and gather all this stuff and, and present it in such a way that we could understand it and, and, you know, the many meetings that you all have had. We really appreciate the efforts that, that went into doing this and presenting to the board. And we thank you and anyone else on the staff that had a hand in that, we appreciate it. Okay, go ahead.
I know you're getting down to, I don't know, twelve on the agenda. Sorry, eleven. But I wanted to introduce these individuals who have been here.
Yes, we do.
We have with us tonight, Mr. Bob Dameron, our financial advisor with Compass Municipal Advisors, and Ms. Granny Heiser, our bond counselor with, or informer at L L P. They're going to be discussing the issuance of a general obligation bond. As you know, several months ago, I proposed, I opposed to the board in thinking about us issuing basically garden from ourselves and doing some renovations on the old district office so that we could get a building that would house all of us, the district office, district level staff. So we're bringing Mr. Bob and Ms. Granny up tonight to explain how we can do that and what that all did entail. So I will turn it over to them at this time.
Alright.
Well, thank you, it's good to be with you all again tonight, it's been a couple of years. All the nights we spent in this building. I will kind of go over the report that we put together for you, this is Bonds 101. I know we've done that previous years, but just wanted to update you on where you were. First page is that capital report, and as you can see, you all have three outstanding debt issues. All of those are at relatively very low interest rates, especially in comparison to today's market. The, the first one is from District 1. The second one is a USDA loan from District 2. And then the third one is a, a part of a referendum bond that was issued under District 1. So as you look at those, you can see that all of those are paying down. The two districts, one bond, one bond wants to pay off on the 27th, that'll be March of 27th, so for three more years. The USDA loan is a long-term loan, it was forty years when it was closed. So it's going to be with us for a while, but the good thing is, it's only at two and three quarters percent. So, you, obviously, you have a lot of money that you can pay that bond off with today. You're not going to change the interest rate on it, and you're not going to change the payment on that bond, it just would shorten the term. But you can take those monies and invest them, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about how we're dealing with the $5 million that Representative Vanberg put into the budget a couple of years ago. And those bonds are being rapidly actually invested with the investment purchase today to lower the overall debt service. And we're going to take advantage of that a little bit in how we pay the proposed $2.5 million bond issued back, and also lower the millage at the same time. The next page is a graph, just to give you an idea of the, of the, how we're trying to do this. As you can see, the consolidated district, as we look at the two districts, if they were consolidated for some period of time, it was at 112 mils, then it fell to 107. When you're, it dropped back up to 109. This year, it's at 103, and we're proposing that next year and the year after, it dropped to 98. And as you can see, we're proposing that that millage stay at that 98 mils or being leveled debt service so that the taxpayers are not seeing enough and down in their debt service millage. Debt service millage is not the same as operational millage, and that debt service millage, everybody pays it. Operational millage, only people with owner occupied homes do not pay operational millage, but with debt service millage, this is standard school debt service millage that everyone pays. The next page is actually the numbers. And, uh, what I want to bring to your attention is how fast those bonds are beginning to pay off. And also, under column F, we show you that you've got a $2.5 million proposed issuance for bonds for this year. We paid off the majority of that the first year, and then next year, we pay off the balance of it and open it back up under the 98 mils. Some additional money for you all to issue in previous years. And as you can see under column G, that gives you an idea of what at 98 mils should be available to you all each year from year after. The whole goal is to try to have millage that's leveled, debt service, but still needs some needs of the school district. Realizing that this year was kind of an unusual year of needing the full $2.5 million, we're going to do it as a two-year bond and stretch it out a little bit. And then next year, we'll get back to the annual bond issue that you issued through SCAGO. Millage cash flow report is the first column, and there's a couple of things I want to bring to your attention on that. First, you can see that we're looking at the audited value of a bill at $32,000 per mil. That's the one that it used to be for either district, but it's still not huge. So, you all are still a core county, you're still trying to take care of the school buildings, open buildings that need to be repaired, such as the construction building. And so, you know, it's a lot of, that's why your millage is higher than it is, say, in Uphold or somewhere else because of that, you know, just is so small here. The other thing I want to bring to your attention is column F. And column F is the state debt service assistance bond. This is monies that were set aside by the legislature in 2022 session, if I remember. And those dollars are finally gotten from the state down to the district. We will be bidding out investments of where we're going to put those at an invested rate that's approved by the state debt office, approved by the treasurer's office, and so on. And use that each year to make a payment on your bond. So that if we just, if we put the whole $5 million in one time, the debt service is going way back down, next year, it'll hop right back up again. And all your constituents would say, "Why my millage go up?" You wouldn't get a thank you note for dropping down here. So, I talked with Representative Vanberg about what his real goal was, of trying to provide debt service relief to the district and to the citizens of the community, and I proposed this proposal to him. It went by the state treasurer's office, everybody kind of signed off on it. We'll probably, we don't, we'll bid those on Friday, or actually, Friday's the date that we're going to bid them. But we're going to get a much higher interest rate on those bond, on those investments than what you're actually paying on the USDA loan. So you're going to, you're going to actually make some money on the two as it goes along. But our goal is to stretch it out. Now you see, the first couple of years, we've got a lot more being used of that to reduce the millage down to 98. But part of that's because we're paying off this $2.5 million over the next two years. So we're, again, our target is to keep millage at a level, level, uh, millage rate as opposed to having it move up and down. But we do anticipate getting that investment in place this time next, next week. Those dollars will then spin off each, each June, they'll go to the state trea- uh, to the county treasurer's office, and this house will use it to then make debt service payments, since you all have other bonds each year. Uh, the last page is your constitutional debt limit. So you might ask, "Well, why are we only borrowing $2.5 million? Why would we borrow a $3.5 million?" Well, because of the assessed value, you all have a constitutional debt limit of eight percent of your assessed value. So the $2.5 million is about the maximum that we can do. We've got about $100,000 of leeway in there, so we're getting pretty close to the $2.5. So that's why we chose $2.5 million. As you pay that money back, then it frees it back up for you to be able to borrow it back the next year and the next year and the next year. So, the $2.5 million refers to how much is in outstanding total of your eight percent debt limit. And so that's where we came up with the $2.5 million being the maximum that we can do using this proposal. So that's kind of the numbers behind the $2.5 million bond issued. You have any question on those, I'll be glad to answer them. Please, our bond counselor, your bond counselor, that she's willing to check everything proper and correct and signs all the approvals of the state tax code that they're approved taxes as debt. And so, Franny, I want to talk about the resolution.
Good evening, it's great to be with you all tonight. So the resolution, um, before you, authorizes the issuance of not to exceed $2.7 million of general obligation bonds. We're using that 2.7 in case there is, between now and the time we sell the debt, your county auditor is able to certify a slightly higher, larger assessed value, therefore a, a larger eight percent debt limit. But I think, I think it's pretty clear that we will probably be borrowing in that range of $2.5 million. This resolution authorizes your superintendent to, to make certain decisions, such as the exact date upon which we sell the bonds. We anticipate that this, these bonds will be offered for sale through an RFP process. It will most likely be placed with a, with a bank. We've got, maybe a local bank, our First Citizens has been very active in, in this arena lately. And, um, the, uh, the, the bonds will be competitively sold, as I say, based on an RFP if required by state law. And I'd be glad to answer any questions y'all might have. This is the first time in a long time that, that, um, y'all as a group, or either individually, has done a standalone bond, generally, y'all take advantage of the SCAGO program. That program really only works for one-year debt, and so y'all don't quite fit in that this time. But I think by the next time you borrow money, we'll be back recommending that y'all use SCAGO so you can take advantage of those economies of SCAGO.
I don't like numbers. But the questions that usually come up, will this raise our taxes? People want to know, will it affect the taxes? And will it affect our local school budget in any way?
This will have no impact on your school operating budget. The, um, as far as your tax, any tax increases, Bob said, the goal is to, to establish 98 mils as your target millage. We believe and are confident that this $2.5 million can be repaid with only 98 mils, using part of the, um, state funds that were made available to help lower debt service budget. So, this, this, this bond will not increase taxes and will not have any impact on your operating budget. And you can point out to people that, that, um, this part of the budget cannot be used for the things that your general fund is used for. These funds cannot be used for, uh, teacher salaries or enhanced, that's the reason I have this. That always has to be capital, and, um, and so that's, um, sometimes people say, "Well, why are you borrowing money? Well, we need more money for, for school teachers." Well, it's two different pots of money, and you need this pot just like you need the pot for school, for, for teachers. They got to have a place to be, your, your administration needs a place in order to carry on their work.
Did you seem to learn to establish a mil of 98? I, I don't understand.
Yes, ma'am, and that's, that's a Bob thing, but if you look at Bob's, um, handout.
Yeah, your current, your current millage was 109, it was lower to 103 this year because of some additional revenues that had built up.
So my fee is now our new, our current.
Current millage, and this will take it to 98. So we're under 100 mils.
The tax bills that will go out in the fall, um, will, the target will be 98 mils. Tax bills that went out last fall, that people started paying in December and January, and can pay actually till March 15th without penalty, that was the higher 103 millage. So really, your, your debt service millage is going down. And once it gets to that 98, it should be level, level as you get. Depends.
And that's, in, in large part, due to the $5 million that the district received in 2022. But it was drafted in such a manner, it had to be for debt service. Because I had someone say, "Why don't, and somebody asked, "Well, why don't we just use that money as opposed to borrowing money?" But you can't, that money had to be used for debt service or debt service relief. And so, this is some way we come up with the guidelines of.
So this is sort of a little unusual solution.
It's, it's not normal, no. But it's, yes, but it was the best that we could come up with in order to meet the terms of what the legislature had said, the use of the money you had to be for. And you certainly don't want to lose $5 million that's available for that. So we put it together in this manner, and then you'll be able to pay off this $2.5 million quicker. So the interest rate, regardless of what the interest rate is, it's going to be paid off extremely quick. You're not going to have that principal accrue in interest for very long. All it goes to the fact of, of running all the numbers together of being the 98 mil, millage target.
So we need to say quick. How quick?
Well, the first payment will be made March 1 of 2025, which is about 1.9 million estimated of the 2.5. And then the other 600,000 will be paid off in March 1 of 2025. of the 2.5, and then the other 600,000 will be paid off in March 1 of 2026.
And that's because that's going to be at a current interest rate, whatever it gets sold, I mean.
It'll be competitively sold.
Right.
A group of banks.
Probably 4%.
Current rates, as you can imagine, are a lot higher, but we're looking probably between five and six.
And you said that the purchases of this bond, it's not one, I mean, can you broken up, right, so there could be different purchases? I don't have a.
Not, not the.
Yeah, it's basically a bank loan.
A bank loan.
So it'll be bid out by, to banks, and banks will take, will make the loan to the district and put that loan in their portfolio, so it's on, you know, their side of, the asset side of their portfolio as a, as a bank loan to the district, and then the district will pay back.
It's not like a savings bond exactly.
Are we?
Not like a savings bond?
No, it doesn't look quite the same. It's based, pure example of what it is, is it's a bank loan.
Thank you.
That the bank will maintain, they won't sell it off, or they can't sell, sell it to someone else, they hold it in their portfolio of that.
Any other questions? Okay, so you need some action from us?
Yes, ma'am.
On the resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, this time, I make a motion that we issued a general obligation bond resolution presented by Mr. Bob Davenport.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? You have a question?
I can't remember what it is. I'm sorry. I had a question on, excuse me. Oh, yes, may I remember? I, I believe I had heard some conversation about maybe needing a bond just for general operating funds, but was it decided we didn't need that? This is very specific, it's for renovations, and it's from that renovation, not the teacher bond.
Right. It's something different?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that I understand exactly what your question is.
I just thought I remembered hearing the fact that the district might wish to have just asked for another bond for general, I don't know, I didn't understand it was specifically this specific. So I, I don't know if you're going to need another one. I don't know who to pick.
Actually, under state law, a school district cannot borrow for operations.
Okay.
So that option is not available to you. There, there is a form of borrowing called a tax anticipation note that y'all have used in the past, and that provides cash flow during the summer and in the fall before your tax revenues start coming in from your property tax. But I think this might be a year where you're not going to need a tax anticipation note, which is a really good thing, I mean, that's sort of a gold star. So that may be what you were thinking about, but, but state law doesn't allow a school district to borrow, to issue debt for operations, it's really a current pay as you go.
Can you further discussion? All right, if you are in favor of moving forward with this resolution for the general obligation bond, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries, we move forward.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much for the referencing. All right, item number 12, which is presentation of school board with district map.
Madam Chair, once again, I'd like to introduce the gentleman visiting with us tonight. For this part of the agenda, we have with us Mr. Drew Gregory, he's the assistant director for the legislative cartography with the Sapporo General Assembly, and you guys with Mr. Gregory, so turn the meeting over to them at this, this point.
Thank you. Hey, how are you doing? All right. So I believe that, if my understanding is correct, you had those put into your packets. So basically, we're just here on the House of Legislature, the county delegation to kind of present you with the map. So what they are proposing is to just, y'all just follow county council district lines. And so that map for county council was done in December 6 of 2021, using the current, most updated census data. So we did not have, we did not have to do any balancing, that was all done by the, for the county council district. So his proposal is for y'all just to follow those lines.
Okay. Yes.
At one time, we thought perhaps that our board would continue to have nine members, but it looks like this, it's not going to happen.
So you will, two of them are going to be at large. So you will have two members voted on at large on the entire county, and then seven individualized districts.
Could you please, okay, could you please explain how the entire thing will work? Because we were told, I mean, we, I had read that people from districts 2, 4, and 6 would be elected this November, and then the 1, 3, 5, and maybe 9, whatever, would be elected in 26.
So what I believe that we are thinking about doing in terms of legislation is to have it, the districts that are presented follow when county council is elected, so that way it just falls under the same thing, use the same map, use the same, same structure as they're currently using. So I think it's reverse. So 2, 4, 6 would be elected in 26, as well as an at-large seat in 1, 3, 5, and 7, and an at-large seat would be elected in 24.
Okay, so there would be one at-large seat in each of the two cycles.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. And usually, that's a, a staggering, or is a pretty common practice across most.
Sure, if that makes sense. And how do, how is the at-large person selected versus the delegate or the candidate from a specific voting zone?
So anyone at that large candidate, they just filed to be that large candidate, and they could run for maybe anywhere in the state, and they would just give, give a top vote either for that position, essentially.
So essentially, what's happening is there are nine board members here presently. Some of us overlap in districts, meaning, and I'll use, if I can use, for example, Ms. Bonaparte and Ms. Bamberg, they reside in the same district that would fall under county council, okay? So some of us may overlap, some of us may not. I do, from my study of the map, there are two districts, I believe there were two districts that none of us were in that district. Am I, I'm correct on that? So essentially, you have, we're, we're, we're going to mirror county council, and let's say hypothetically, Ms. Bamberg and Ms. Bonaparte falling, one of them, if they decided to run, or both of them, or somebody else, a third person could decide to run. So essentially, it's, it's like you explained, we're falling under, what, what you're talking about is probably the legislation that was originally introduced, which this is now the way that it, right, this is the way that it will be. We will simply mirror county council, and then there will be two at large.
All right, so John and I are the same.
Yes, John, you and John.
So which ones did you say will be, have to be elected this November?
That is a, that's one, I think it's 1, 3, is it 1, 3 and 5?
1, 3, 5, 6, 7, and an at-large.
Yeah.
1, 3, 5, 6, so 7, and then at-large.
I'll have, once, well, I'll double check on that, but if I remember correctly, yes. Because I do remember it being approached that way first.
Right, originally.
And when is the filing date? I don't know.
You can file, as long as you file before August 15th, I believe, at noon. They can file, I believe, at any time. I, I tried to look this up the other day, and I can now find it somewhere, but I did find it in, and that was August 15th at noon. So as long as you file before then, you're good.
What is her name?
My name's Drew Gregory.
Drew, D-R-U?
Drew, D-R-U. And I also have a one drive, basically, with all of y'all's maps in there, and I can.
Yeah, we saw that.
Okay, so. And then I also have physical maps, two big ones, and then some individualized seats that's marked out with y'all's, with the addresses on there. Oh, very old group, please.
I was suggesting you use a larger font.
Um, so the small, so the smaller map is meant to be printed out on this big three foot by three foot. That's why she called and, or emailed me, and I had the smaller one for you.
I try to write it by.
Yeah, I have five.
Yeah, it's meant, usually the bigger ones and stuff, if you look at it like on a PDF reader, you can see it and see everything, but yeah, if you print it out, it's a little difficult, that's why I brought the big ones real.
So just for the record, let me tell you who's in what district. This is just with a board member, or maybe I can tell you this a little bit later, but I do know who, who falls in what district, and I can give you all that information a little bit later after these gentlemen finish with us. Before, before we, maybe after the meeting, or, you know, just.
Right.
I'll let you know what district you're in.
So if I have a question, I can contact you.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Will you please leave us your contact information?
Yes, ma'am, I can leave it to the superintendent.
Well, we really appreciate the work that you all went in. I, I know that this is just, there's been a lot going on with all of this, and I'm glad that we're finally at a resolution with making the decision to just mirror county council and have two at large. So Cindy, the at-large, the at-large would be anybody in Bamberg County.
Right, and the one would be elected in the first cycle, and then the second one would be elected in the second cycle.
The second cycle.
Okay, that's good enough.
So it'll be like any other election, if you fall in whatever district and you choose to run for the seat, again, you are free to do that. If you fall in a district, and then anybody can run in the county for an at-large seat. And I'll give you your districts.
So you could run for at-large in the one election, losing that election, and then run in the next election.
That's true. You're, and it's been done, it's been, things like that have been done. You can run for your seat and run for.
If you didn't win your seat or whatever.
Yeah, and when you, you might win the, the at-large, you just never know.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
We thank you so much.
Awesome, well, if there's anything else, just.
We appreciate it.
Love you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
So I'll get on.
Have a good night. Okay. All right, number 13, monthly financial report, I'll turn that over to Devon.
Good evening, everyone. Before I start, don't forget to do your economic interest ergonomics month.
Yep.
If you have any issues or any problems, you can call me, but don't forget to do those. If you have in your packet your monthly financial report, if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or if y'all prefer asking privately, I'm in the office talking. See you.
I noticed, I was wondering how the well-being program is taken for. I mean, is there a special slot for?
Who?
Is that?
It's made by a case.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so with regards to the monthly financial report, board members, you've had a chance to review it prior to tonight's meeting. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to accepting this report?
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the financial report as presented.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We are down to item number 14, which is board member update. It is not me, I don't have anything to say. I would like to turn that over to Beverly Bonaparte.
I just want to let my fellow board members know that I have been taking some classes, and I just finished on last, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before, I'm taking leadership classes through Tocqueleton State College, and I passed my first class on last Saturday, which was leadership in a cancer awareness class. So I just want to let, I'll bring my certificate, because I do have it, and in April, I will start back again for more leadership classes. And I just want to let the class know that I had my first meeting with the legislative committee that's going up there to the classroom to see about these bills and how to get us money into our schools. I had my first meeting when I went to the last conference. I have a meeting coming up on April the 19th up in Columbia, and I just want to let y'all know that Debbie is on fire. She is, she's a go-getter, and anything that I hear that's going to benefit Bamberg County, I'm going to make sure I bring that information back to us, because like she said, there are funds out there, you just have to keep talking to our legislators and our senators to let them know that the money is needed for the students, not for the people, but for the students. I'm just excited, because it was, it was a really exciting meeting just to be in, in her presence and to see how they go up there and they really corner these guys and ladies, senators and our, and our legislators, in order to get them to listen. And I am just, I'm, I'm overwhelmed to be a part of the team, and I just want to let y'all know that I will represent Bamberg County to the best of my ability.
We appreciate you for that. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is item number 15, visitors' comments, and I do not see that anyone signed up, so we are now move into item number 16 on the agenda, which is executive session. What's the pleasure of the board with regards to executive session?
Madam Chairman, I'm going to hit it this time, we go to executive session.
All right, motion on the floor, second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor that we move into executive session, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We will now move into executive session to discuss employment personnel, personnel recommendations for hire, personnel recommendations for resignation, discussion of release of students, and contractual matters regarding incidental to potential sale of property. discussion of release of students, contractual matters regarding incidental to potential sale of property. Okay, board members, I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we come out of executive session, any discussion?
Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board with moving out of executive session and back into open session? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, we are now back in open session. And we are down to item number 17, which is action on executive session items if needed.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the personnel recommendations for hire for employees 1A, 1B, and 1C. That we approve the recommendations for resignations for employees 2B, 2C, 2D, and 2E. And that we approve the transfer request for students B, A, BB, and BC.
All right, motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. We are down to item number 18, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. All right, motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the meeting is now adjourned.